Good evening. Welcome to the April 3, 2018 Board of Selectmen Meeting. As all the selectmen are present, along with the town manager and town clerk, as various members of the public, please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's been a request from the control room that we all put our mics on. It says when we leave them on the table, when we shuffle papers and everything, it gives him an air rank. First order is the approval of the minutes from March 20, 2018 minute. So moved. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And one of staffs? Thank you. Brings us to our first public comment. The first public comment is, please step to the microphone, state your name and where you live. Going once. Oh, we have one.
Donald Young, Bridge Street, Burwick, Maine. Program chairman for the Historical Society. And I would like to bring to everyone's attention that we will be having a program in April, and it will be held at the library, coming up on Wednesday, 18th of April, 7 o'clock. And as an interesting side note to that event, the library normally closes at 7:30 on Wednesday. Our program will run longer than that. And thanks to the fine collaboration that we have with the librarian Sharon Kelly, she keeps that open for us, at no extra expense. She doesn't get paid for that. So I want to bring that little aspect of it to your attention and to the attention of all the townspeople, that there are hardworking people here in town that go the extra mile.
Excuse me, Donald. What's the...
Oh, the topic.
The topic, yes.
I think you'll be interested to hear that Karen Egger, librarian from South Burwick, will be the featured speaker, along with five other people from her town, and they'll be talking about the relationship they have with the sister city, Tuskegee, Alabama.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bring us to, we have no public hearing tonight. There's reports of committees, there's BCTV.
Just wanted to kind of bring you up to date of where we are. Did up my programming for March. We're still at the 70/30, 70% locally produced, 30% alternative programming. From May 2016 to May 2017, there were 30 locally produced programs. From May, mid-May or the end of May to March, the end of March, there were 98 programs locally produced this year. So that's a huge change. Also wanted to let you know that I had mentioned Jody Puffer would be joining our committee. Unfortunately, or fortunately for her, I guess, her mother has not been doing well, and they have decided they're going to put in a little apartment on for her, and she just said she doesn't feel she can commit the time to it at this point. Michelle Tavener has decided to go back to get her master's degree, so I've kind of lost two, but I've gained two. Tammy Jackson Cole has joined us, and she is starting to edit for us, which is awesome. She's doing a great job. We've already produced one video with her, and we're looking forward to the next one. And Ralph Morang from the Library Board has also joined us. He is going to be taping all of the library events for me. So we kind of picked a few and lost a few, but that's okay. Jody did say that she would revisit it in the fall to hopefully do the soccer games, if possible. And then videos that we've done this month, one of the ones that we just did, which was unusual, was the chapel at the cemetery. Videotaped the early morning sunrise service on Easter, managed to get it up on the same day, so it played at 3 o'clock that afternoon, and again at 6 o'clock at night for people who couldn't make it, which was kind of neat. First time I videotaped in that location, and it's gorgeous. The other things that we've done are Chamber of Commerce, we videotaped their talk up at the library, We the People for the Burwick Historical Society, Katie Kramer, the Navy Prison, and I'm still trying to work on The Many Faces of Burwick, Episode III. Any questions?
No, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are.
Appreciate it very much.
All right, well, I'll try to fill James's shoes. Derek White, for those who do not know me. Let's see, for the Vision Burwick, the biggest thing, I guess, is the Community Engagement Academy, that actually the Vision Burwick Committee will actually participate in the second year, although actually there'd be a total of three stops. The first stop actually is in Burwick on April 12. Will be partnered with Summersworth, Chairman of Commerce, and actually doing the stop over here in the prime spot. I think they're doing it at the old, what was the place right across the river? The lawn, not the lawn, the, not the laundromat, the dry cleaning, another one, and then do another one downtown to it, down the plaza, down Summersworth. So there's more information on the Vision Burwick website, but it's something that we're going, just collaborating, sharing some of the collaborations between the two communities, and actually how we actually work together. So again, I would recommend actually getting more information on the website, and trying to listen to Ramble on that one. The other thing that I've been involved with actually is in working with the town manager, actually the Economic Development Committee. We're actually still trying to get to that tipping point where actually we have a little bit more of a nucleus, right? And we have a nucleus, but actually we don't have a whole lot of momentum at this point. So we're really struggling actually trying to pull some actual members of the community in there, but in, what we're really focused on right now is actually more on what we can do with the town assets versus trying to put more of the focus in on terms of prime tanning right now. As part of that joint meeting we had the other day, it was pretty evident that without the conversation with that Maccahay, it's really nothing but speculation at this point. So we really want to put our emphasis on what we actually can control in around the perimeter of the primary, prime tanning, and also along the Route 4 and Route 236 corridors. So it's something we'll be focused on in the next couple of meetings as we go forward. So in terms of the other committees, unfortunately, I don't have any updates from that, but I know the Rec Committee's been very active, as well as the park up the street. You know, Serena's been doing a lot of work up there as well, so that's about all I have at this point. Any questions from the board?
I'll just make a comment is, we did the community engagement last year as part of that, and that was very informative. We had a lot of people from out of town come in and see what we're doing, and take ideas, and give us ideas, and it's happening again next Thursday.
Yes.
And it's very informative.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not, I've been involved with it. I know James actually has done quite a bit of work with it as well, so I know it's been very positive, as you said, so they're really looking for another good turnout this year as well.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's no objection, I'd like to move our agenda around a little bit, is we have the new business with the Comcast franchise agreement, is the BCTV committee, what was left of it is here, is, and I know some of them haven't eaten supper yet, so if there's no objection, we'd like to move to that first.
Want me to comment on that?
Comment.
We have finished the franchise agreement, and it's actually been a very positive experience with Comcast. It took us a little bit longer to get paperwork back and forth, but I'll highlight what some of the accomplishments that part of the franchise are. It's a 15-year contract. The franchise fees has gone from 2.5% to 5% coming back to the town for BCTV. This will also include finishing out our extensions, build out of Little Liver Road, as well as the rest of Diamond Hill. In fact, Brian was here last Friday, out driving around, making sure he had the right addresses, so, and he and I collaborated on that to make sure it's all complete. So that will take, once we pay out $40,000, which actually is coming from them, we'll reimburse them as part of the capital project, that will take up to 18 months once they start. There's a lot of permitting with CMP and other areas that they have to do. And plus, we get an extra channel, so we'll have two operating channels right away, and then within 10 years, if the need is there, we'll add a third. But this, I think, is a real good accomplishment by the people that did it. Thanks goes out to Tony Vigu, who is our consultant. I honestly don't think we could have done it without him. He is an absolute wealth of legal information, so it's been very beneficial. It's been a good process, and you have it tonight to sign off on. There's one outside of the contract that I'm waiting to get back from them, but this contract can be signed tonight. We're all gone through it, and Tony's gone through it, so that's where we are on that.
Any questions?
No, long time in the works, that's for sure.
Long time.
No, there was some questions about the length of the contract, is 15 years, and Tony Vigu suggested that we go as long as possible, that there's been a move in some areas, not necessarily in this area, of the cable companies, you know, trying to cut and run. And he said that with the way that things are going with the internet and things like that, that we're not guaranteed that 10 years from now is we're going to be able to have these same kind of deals. So he suggested we go with the 15, is, actually, he said, suggested we go with a 20-year if we could, but the main law doesn't allow that, so. Any questions of Steve or the committee?
No.
Great job.
They did a great job.
Absolutely.
Do we have a motion to accept the contract? So moved.
Second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Thank you. I guess committee can go home now and get supper.
Bring it back for us, please.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Is that all you were here for?
Yes.
Great.
That brings us to appointment, presentations, and other guests. As the appointment, when Rad Nichols from Coast Bus was here before us, earlier this spring, he mentioned that there was an opening on the directors, Board of Directors for Burwick. As I went and sat down with Rad and spoke to him at length, currently there are 17 positions available, and only 12 of them are full, and so they're looking to have people onboard. And I don't know, Terry would say foolishly, I accepted to be appointed, if that's your pleasure.
What's he talking about?
They meet once a month. When we've been going through the grant processes, you know, for the town, whether it was across the street with the EPA, or grants with the Kidderi area transfer, or the DOT, is one of the first things they ask is if there's public transportation. And obviously, we have it, and we're one of the only towns in southern Maine to actually have it, other than the Clipper service that goes to the Navy Yard. There are no other stops in the Burwicks or Lebanon. I don't think there are any in Elliott or Kidderi either. And I feel that this is something that if we're going to be continuing with this, that we need to have a voice on it.
I agree.
As I said, I foolishly put my name forward, is, so.
So I would move that the chairman, Tom Wright, be appointed to the Coast Bus Board of Directors to represent the town of Burwick.
I'll second. There we go.
That wasn't too quick, was it?
No.
Any further discussion?
No.
Nope.
All those in favor? Opposed? Four to one. Thank you, I guess.
Thank you.
That brings us to unfinished business, is the transfer station survey.
I'll address that. At our last meeting, we talked about quite a comprehensive change, recommendations from the board, thought maybe we should not bite off as much as we thought we might, and I sat down with Hokey, who runs it, and Robert, who oversees that, and we all agreed that we'll stay, keep our hours the same. We would close the swap shop on the weekend, and have it open on Tuesdays, and that we're just going to move some of the cans around, so see if we can improve on traffic flow. So when people come in, they can do their recyclables first, and then move forward and do their solid waste. So hopefully, it lightens up the traffic, and so we don't really need anything to vote, but I think we thought going with your recommendation would probably work better, and we'll see how that goes. That won't take an effect until June 1, a week of June, and we will put out notices to everybody when they come in, and we'll hand them out up until that time, and we'll also have people there to help guide people if they need help.
The only thing I had on that was, I know that you had said the new hours to be Tuesday, Fridays, and Saturdays. Is there any thought about changing that Friday to a Thursday? With that being said, just because it kind of spaces it out a little bit more, and when people go away for long weekends, and I'm just throwing it out there, just a thought, because if somebody's going away for a long weekend, typically they'll leave on a Thursday, they can go, and then when they come back, there's a Tuesday run as well. It's just something to, I don't know.
I think once we see how this works, and if we still have a lot of traffic, I think we'll come back to you with maybe looking at the hours and days and increasing it on your...
And then the second chance shop is only going to be Tuesdays, correct?
Only Tuesdays. Yeah.
My recommendation is that we eliminate the second-hand shop, but that's something we can discuss.
Mine is absolutely based upon us.
You go through it, and, you know, there's a lot of stuff gets dropped off there that is really no good, and the guys end up throwing it in the dumpster at the end of Sunday anyways.
Well, if you look at the percentages of who's dropping off, it's like 2/3 of 70% are dropping off, but only like a third is picking up.
Yeah, it's a pretty small home.
So it's kind of counterproductive a little bit. It's causing more work.
So we'll take a look at it.
Where does that go? So where does the second-hand stuff shop go? That material goes in the dumpster?
A lot of what they're getting.
Yeah, I love it. Because they don't want to pay to get rid of it.
Yeah, it clogs up the swap shop, and most of its stuff is just either broken.
Yeah, as I'd say, you know, people drop it off there rather than pay to put it in the dumpster, and so it ends up being put in the dumpster anyway. So you might as well have the free Saturday's back.
Right, exactly. Well, it all shakes out.
The only thing that still kind of concerns me is that middle, that middle aisle, having a household and recycling on opposite sides, that's the only thing that still concerns me, because you're going to get cross, people walking across paths would be issues, so. And maybe closing a second chance shop, you know, could contribute to helping to correct that, I don't know. I don't know.
No, saying like recycling there as you first drive in?
Yeah.
I know, that's what I was...
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, just something.
I think a little bit of the time, we can kind of weed out what doesn't work and what does work.
Yeah, so just, yeah, plan, do, check, act.
So what's the household bill? Just any rubbish? Nothing recyclable?
Right.
Right.
Just regular rubbish.
Oh, good, so I can bring just regular rubbish down?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. I thought we had to recycle everything.
Well, we're concerned when we change the cans.
I'm just kidding you.
That other stuff will go into the recycling, so we need to prevent that.
Just throw them all into recycling.
Any further questions?
Get the wedge up in the landfill, I guarantee you.
The Estebrook property.
I didn't put anything in because we already had, looked at prices of selling that, and again, it's something that I don't think you should rush into making decisions on, because we still have that fire, the new fire station question out there if we're going to use that. So if you'd like, we can pass over that, or I can, we can come back and look at it, but...
We did get an appraised, though, right? We know what the appraisal is.
Yeah, the gal that works in our office was an appraiser. She works for MRI, and she and Paul looked at comparisons, and the most that we saw of an old school with very little property, or in some with larger parcels, were just under $400,000.
So what do you think that's worth? 300?
Maybe. Maybe not even that much, because you're only, they are looking at a whole parcel for their comparisons. We're only looking at half that parcel, take the police station out, and you have a building that really doesn't have any value at all, so it's really more of a parcel, so.
A lot of mitigation that has to occur over there as well, so.
Maybe a couple hundred thousand at the most. So it is something that we can sit on, I mean, there's no rush to it, from my perspective, and I know her, she's in a hurry, but I think we need to decide what we want to do first.
Once she comes in with a million-dollar check?
Yeah, if she does that, then I'm doubtful that's it, so.
Okay. Any other questions for that?
No, Thomas, I don't.
No. That brings us to electronics policy. This is something that I had asked Steve to look into for us.
Now, what is this now, what are you talking about?
It's the use of electronics during the board meetings. I had several people talk to me, concerned about the use of electronics. They thought it was, during the meetings, they thought it was disrespectful of the public, is, they felt that, and I do too, that when we're here at a meeting, is we should be attending to the business at hand, and, you know, unless there's an emergency of some kind, is all other things can wait until after the meeting, is, you know.
Understood.
Steve had, or actually Patty had sent this out, the one that Steve had written up for us, is, any questions?
No, I think that it's following protocol, and it's giving, you know, everybody that's attending the respect, and we shouldn't be on our phones, I agree.
Who complained?
Is this something, is electronic policy that you guys are talking about, is this, is it legal? Is it, what is?
It's a protocol that you can ask, just like any, like if you go into a theater or you go into a meeting, people always ask to please turn off your cell phone.
So the select board or council people in the state of Maine, in small communities or communities, it's the same type of policy that they have?
Yeah.
We have it at work. I mean, it's just if you're in a meeting and you're listening to people speak, and somebody's on their phone, it's rude.
Who complained?
What if we had an emergency?
Well, that's a little different.
That's different.
How would we know?
Well, you can always put it on vibrate, or whatever, so, and actually, a couple years ago, I did that when my brother was having surgery.
So we can have it out if there's an emergency or something like that?
Right.
You know, not to ring, just vibrate.
Josh has a question.
Is, I had several members of the public talk today.
Oh, I'll be honest here. More context is going to be added to this. Last summer, when I had a discussion with Steve at the door about a separate issue, you ultimately interjected, and you made a comment at that time about a number of complaints about me and my phone use. I asked you then, who? You said, number of people. I then said, please forward those on to me, I would gladly discuss with them exactly what I've done, and talk to them. To this day, I still haven't received any of those things to be forwarded to me. You haven't, at least I can't say, made that effort to do so. And here we are again, following the February 20 meeting, to which I used my phone to have a direct conversation with the town of Burri, in the town of Burwick, a citizen who happened to be in North Burwick that night, attending that board meeting, dealing with the decision we had made during those meetings with Lebanon to discuss the school board budget. And he gave me very up-to-date information about what the town was doing, and its response to our actions. And so I brought that to the public when I went to the podium. And it's just a strange coincidence that on a time front, now we have an electronic device use policy that's been brought forward when I brought my computer in before to go ahead and deal with when Steve came in to discuss the MSAD 60 budget that had been passed, and the previous year's statistics that we had. There was no complaint about that. And I've used it other times to, at times, check math, and also to bring up discussion about my complaints with the Thomas Agency, who we, for personal property issues, send out requests to get payments back that they haven't paid the town. And we ultimately agreed that there was at least an issue with them, because, again, poor business record, and at least that was brought to the table. Those are the things I've used my phone for. I know this is a direct response to me. Now, it could be denied, that's fine, I can't change the response, but it is a direct result of my actions, and my actions have been nothing short of doing what is best for the town in my interest, in my belief, and has never once been disrespectful. So I'm trying to figure out who's complained, and why I haven't been made aware, because it's me who's using the phone.
I spoke to the people, there are three people that spoke to me about this. I spoke to them and forwarded your request, and all three of them said that they felt intimidated by you, and didn't want to be, you know, harassed in public, so, is I forwarded to them, if they don't want to bring it forward, that's their choice. I'm not going to name them in public because they ask for my confidentiality.
Interesting. See, I don't know personally what I would do to harass an individual, but I would like to point out to the public, if those who haven't seen, my Facebook post that I put up today, which probably, again, might cause some consternation here, but you should know that I'm facing a second, a Freedom of Information Act request, per the Board Selectment Chair, Tom Wright. And it's requesting, the first one at least, six months' worth of information, messages, emails off of my phone relating to town business. It had to be amended, and so that is represented in the second Freedom of Information request that asks for the most recent four months of information off of my phone. Now, that duration is from November through February. I've had to reach out to the ACLU to deal with this, because to my knowledge, this would be an infringement on those who have trusted in me their confidence to keep their concerns private, as well as to make sure that I actually hear what they want and bring it to the table. This is nothing short of a move to basically intimidate me, and I'm okay with that. I'm not intimidated. I find it really, to be quite frank, embarrassing, shallow, and a sign of an incredibly desperate attempt to this board to simply look at the one member of a four-to-one vote and tell them, we've had our fill of you. But I'll give you this confidence, if you can rest assure, I got about a month left. I haven't taken out papers, I already announced tonight that I'm not going to. I'm leaving the board. I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but this policy is a strict, definite response to me. It is not about how this board has ever conducted itself before, and it's strictly focused on me. I don't, I don't see it any other way. And to impugn my character by stating that there is somehow a harassment intimidation factor I bring to the table, when I simply just want to know who asked, so that I can explain myself to them. As I told you last summer, and I told you on the mic, last meeting we had, just before we closed it out, for anyone to assume that if it was even true wouldn't be correct, but I'd be willing to talk with them. But your use of your voice to speak those words without anything other than your words being out there is nothing short of an impugning of my character, and that's been the entire mission of this very policy. And I got to tell you, I find that it just... And I got to tell you, I, I find that it just sadly speaks volumes to the way this town is conducting itself.
Any further comments?
No, no, I think we're good.
I would move we accept the town of Burack Electronic Device Use Policy as presented.
Is that, whoa, 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 hold on. I'm thinking here. Is that what you really want to do?
Yep. Why not?
I hate having a string.
It's professional courtesy to the people, to our constituents. There's no reason it should be perused.
We shouldn't be sitting up here on our phones.
If we're not doing it, then we shouldn't have to have a string wrapped around us, right? In other words, if we're not going to be doing it, I don't do it.
I think it shows a sign of commitment.
Josh isn't going to do it. He just told he wasn't going to do it, so.
So you think we should just not do it at all?
And just do, say, we do it without putting this in force.
That would be something I, I don't know, I guess, I don't, I hate being hamstrung by any government regulations or any regulations at all. I already have it up to here, and I just think by putting another regulation is like...
I know, but I think we need to give the town...
But it's something we can talk about. If it, if it persists in the future, then we do it. I don't know. It's up to you people. Whatever the majority is, I will. I can see the good and the bad of it. I, I don't know. I'm not a hundred percent sold on it, but I'm seventy, I, you know, I know we don't. I just had to shut mine off. I didn't turn it down and things from sitting here beeping, beeping, beeping. Trying to figure that out, but I...
Well, I think it's a little bit different for Ed and I because in my work environment, when we go into a meeting, we shut our phones and we give whoever's speaking our full attention. If we're sitting there on our phones, that's rude. I'm sorry, it is. If I'm sitting up here and I'm on my phone while somebody's up at the podium speaking, it is. And Josh, to your point, I don't know what took place that night, but I've seen you on your phone on several occasions. I know I've had mine out and I'm going to own that and I'm going to do better at that. But I think that we need to set that example, and by adopting this, it's just basically adhering to what we should be doing and that's the right thing.
And also, it's in there about the public as well, to refrain from using electronic devices during their meetings.
So when we, this is going to pass, let's go and say it's three to two. Does she have to close her computer? Because it says here, "A proof of computer use during meeting must be approved by the majority of the Board of Selectmen." So how does this apply in that situation? If the permission's granted, do we have to acknowledge what we're going to be using it for? And if we give that acknowledgement, can then I just do whatever I want? Because evidently, it's only about, I got the approval. The board said, eh, it's okay now you can do this. We grant you that permission. Just it doesn't, it's very nonspecific there and again...
Are we using a, who's using a computer during the meetings?
The only time it's been in these three years I've been on was me, when Steve Connelly was here.
So you were showing something.
Yeah, he had that, remember the book that we get mailed about the school year, the budget and all that stuff? We had an email form of that, so I had a digital copy I was reading.
And we could take the computer, I mean, you could take the computer out of it if you wanted to.
I, I just don't think we need the policy.
You guys say everything.
Well, if you read the last part, "This policy is not meant to prohibit board members from using computers or similar devices during the meeting if the use pertains to business that is on the agenda for the meeting in session."
But we got to get approval. We got to ask you for approval ahead of time to use a computer for, for something that's in session where...
What's the difference between Facebook Messenger on a computer and on the phone?
I, I don't do either.
I know, I think I'm the only one who has Facebook of the four of us here, and I can safely say the difference? One's an app and one is tied directly to your Facebook page. It's the same thing. So if I was on my computer doing that, I'd be able to do the exact same thing as I had done that night when I was talking with Dustin Price, who was at that meeting in North Burack, making it perfectly clear to me exactly what North Burack was doing. That is what happened. And when I was having that conversation, the Coast Bus representative was there, asking us to double his donation to go ahead and make sure they could still run their route here, despite the fact that I, I take personal issue, and I know Mark and others did too, about the fact that not only does the federal government give them a subsidy, but that we give them a subsidy, and I'm not seeing a reduction in the rate for the people who use the service. So I was less than inclined to give full attention to something I already knew enough about. And quite frankly, the first time they'd shown up in, what, over a year plus, he didn't earn my time. And especially when the most important issue in this town at that moment was the issue of the school budget that was causing a huge amount of consternation that made us have to meet with all three boards and the school board.
Well, that's a whole different subject.
That that's what I was talking about.
That's not what they're talking about. We're talking about the policy that's going to get on the school board meeting.
No, that's what, that's what led to this.
So do we want to table this and...
No, no, just get it done, whatever we got to do. Can we cut out the computer? If someone wants to bring a computer in and show?
Well, no, it's... I don't think there's, there's not a problem with that. I think it's just when you're using it for personal reasons other than business.
I'm not going to bring, I mean, who's going to bring a computer in here? Well, you never know with the future, right?
We put everything on the overhead anyways, and that's ninety-nine percent of the time. Right, exactly. We put it on because, just to be transparent. We don't want to be pulling something up saying, this is what we're looking at.
This is not, I mean, it can be changed.
Okay, all right, you got me.
I guess my question is, I just heard if it's being used for personal, what did I use that was personal on my phone? Because again, I know I'm the only one here on this one. What did I do that was personal on my phone?
We don't know.
Exactly. You're, you're trying to find out, but you're going to have the long hill on that one, but the question still remains, why?
Call for a vote.
It's just said.
All those in favor?
No, I didn't hear of the motion.
So we're two of them.
There's a motion and a second.
I second, Ed made the first, I made the second, we all, four to one. There we go.
Those opposed?
So it's four to one?
Yes, you just, you know, make sure this gets, uh...
Be revisited at any time.
Exactly.
Okay.
If it presents an issue, then we'll revisit it.
Town manager report.
Very little, I just wanted to let the public know that I received a letter from the main historic preservation group. The chapel and the cemetery has been nominated for, be put on the register. I think that's quite an honor.
That is.
Especially after all the work they've done. And I gave a copy of that to Tony Incotta to make sure he knew.
Cemetery over.
Cemetery road.
On Cemetery Road?
The chapel.
Better watch out what you make historic over there because you might not be able to build a police station across the street. Instead of historic district.
So I think that's a pretty good honor.
Yes, it is.
The letter asked if we had any opposition to it being nominated, and I would take the assumption that we don't, the officials. But I, I will send something in and let them know that we're very pleased to see that somebody has nominated that.
Yeah, they, the, the Cemetery Committee has been working very hard in the last couple of years trying to upgrade. Is, they had a survey done of the building and the foundation was beginning to fall in. And they said it was probably due to not having heat in the building and the frost heaves. So they started looking at that, and once they started that, they decided that they were going to do what they could to bring it up to code and make it usable. Is, it's been sitting there most of my life that I remember and hardly ever used. And now that it has light and heat and running water, is they're hoping that they can start having other functions there. They have an office in there now for, so that the, the caretaker can do all the paperwork and keep all the records there.
Is that a full-time job? Caretaker, no?
No.
Part-time?
That's Tammy Matthews, yeah.
Oh, okay, yep.
She's their bookkeeper also. So I know that they spent well over two hundred thousand dollars.
On that?
On that building. They have done quite a bit. They did a lot of sound attenuation, attenuation boards inside so that it doesn't echo. It's something that we need to look at upstairs in our auditorium. We've talked about that in the past, so. Yeah, is, anybody gets a chance, is go up and visit when they're open. It's gorgeous in there.
Also, on May, at our May 1st meeting, we will have a presentation by Port City Architecture on their first draft of both projects. One, just a standalone fire station, and the other would be a public safety building. And they'll give rough estimates on costs and there'll be a presentation, so that's the first of a few I think they'll do before we make decisions, so. That's all I have.
On that, with the design of the public safety building option, has every, both the fire and police departments been engaged with how the design should be set up?
Yes, they have.
Selectmen's communication is all I've received lately is more letters from Comcast saying they're moving channels around and charging more money.
Got that right.
So that brings us to accounts payable.
Well, Tom, I got one thing up on the, I hear some people up on, I don't know what you're going to say. They, they, they asked me off and on about getting the, the Loves Book Road kind of like cleaned up on the Guinea Road end, Blackberry Hill Road end a bit. And Steve and Robert tell me that, you know, there's nothing we can do there. But, you know, the people have asked me, you know, and it is, you know, we talk about emergency times, we talk about, you know, response times and if that end of the road was, was at least graded, a couple loads of gravel in there, it kept passable, then it would help in that direction on cutting those response times down a hell of a lot instead of coming up, going down the other way from Route 4 and cutting this way. I'm trying to figure a way around it to help those people out a bit and make that, you know, I know it's...
That's the discontinued road, right?
It's a discontinued road, but we've allowed the people to build there.
Right.
And now they want to, they're paying taxes, so what the hell's the problem with half a dozen loads of gravel and grading it?
I think you'd have to go on a ballot and have the public approve it.
Oh, for Christ's sake, Steve. We're talking about a half a dozen loads of gravel and just back drag it with a loader.
You have a lot of roads like that in town. There's a road up on where Lisa lives that's a discontinued road to maintenance.
Rent road?
What is it?
Were there people living on it?
I don't know. I've never been down there.
Thompson Hill end.
There's no, there's nothing living on that, is it?
Oh, yeah, there's quite a few.
What, past leases?
No, no, from this end.
The other end.
Oh, the other end.
Yeah, from the Cranberry Metal Road.
How bad is the road? Is it like that, is it passable?
Yes, it's, it's better, it's better than the, you're looking at Longbrook.
That's because Brownie has a pit up there, so it involves the car.
He keeps it graded off, so he's up, yep, yep. I don't know, I just, to me, it's like...
No, the, the...
It's asinine. It's an emergency cut through and it should be, you know, it's all the way down to the bridge. It just, it just, timing-wise. It should be passable.
Well, it's the same thing as what happened when I wanted us to take over the contracting of the, of plowing for the library. Even though we give all the money there, in this case, they're paying taxes, it's a private thing, so we can't go ahead and do it even though it makes sense to do. That's the situation we're in. It's a legal issue.
Well, not really. We could just go do it. I mean...
A private company, if you were contracted by the people who live on that road, this is a private road.
They could do that.
You could go in and do that if you were hired to do that.
They don't want to spend money, naturally.
The town can't do that because it's not the town road.
Yeah, there, there's, not necessarily in this case, but something that people get confused of, there are discontinued roads and abandoned roads. A discontinued road is the town claims the right of way still, but we just don't maintain it. Whereas abandoned road is the town gives up that right of way and it reverts back to the landowners. Is, and for the town to take over or to stop maintaining...
I'm not talking about taking the road over.
No, no, but for us to maintain it is what would be the process of doing that, that would be...
Going back out to the public to, to put it on the ballot and say, ask that question. Will they adopt it?
How many houses are down there, Mark?
Oh, I can't even...
I haven't been down there for fifteen years.
It's got to be four or five or six, half that bridge.
At least, yeah.
Or coming in from Guinea Road, you can't get in there this time of year. Most of the year you can't get in there.
A lot of work. It needs to be...
Not a lot of work, I mean...
Needs to be...
You bring me the gravel, I'll spread it.
The road is very narrow in parts and it needs ditching to keep the water from running and mudding it up.
Yeah, yeah, like a lot of roads in town, yeah.
Let me ask you from this perspective, if Mark did it all on his own, is there anything the town can't, can say that he can't do?
No, no, they can't.
If, if anyone wanted to go in and do it on their own, if the people living there said, please do it, is there anything that says we can't?
No.
There's an owner that lives up there who has done, tried to do some ditching on his own to keep the water running.
I see that, yeah.
Yeah, could use some improvements, but...
I'm not going to suggest one way or the other. I'm just saying if that's can be done and you're that committed to wanting to do it, there's nothing that says he can't be stopped. At least he knows he can't be stopped to help it. That's what you want to do.
I've talked to one of the people who lived there and said that they could contract people to do it, just the town can't. It's a liability issue and a legal issue.
This is my question.
I'm going to take a ride up there anyways and look at, I think I haven't been up that way probably for fifteen years, so. I know there have been other houses back in there, so.
It's pretty bad.
Yeah.
Pretty built up. It's definitely a shortcut to Route 4.
Oh, yeah.
That was done, taken care of. It would save, they talk about time up here and down there. I'd save him fifteen, twenty minutes. All right, thank you for your help.
Thank you, Mark. That brings us to accounts payable. We have account payable warrant from March 22nd, 2018, warrant 1-8-3-8 for the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred six dollars and three cents. Water warrant, 0-8-3-8, from March 22nd, 2018, for the amount of four thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Payroll warrant, 1-8-3-9, from March 29th, 2018, for the amount of fifty thousand three hundred fifty dollars and fifteen cents. Account payable warrant, 1-8-3-9, from March 29th, 2018, for the amount of sixty-four thousand twenty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Water warrant, 0-8-3-9, from March 29th, 2018, for the amount of three thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and two cents. And payroll warrant, 1-8-4-0, for April 5th, 2018, for the amount of forty-six thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. I'll make a motion that we pay our bills. Second. All those in favor? Thank you. New business we took care of. We have no quick claims. We have no abaintments. The second public comment, second public comment. Anybody have some public comment? Step to the podium and state your name. We do have an executive session. Is, I'm going to ask if there is any other business or non-agenda items to address first. So, will we, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for Title 1, subsection 405, 6A, for discussion of personnel. Is, I will say that we will not be making any decisions in this meeting. Is, so, is other than that, we will be closing out. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Thank you.